Okay. I'll call this meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge that by Marie Grant Cal.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Uh, if you have a cellphone with you, please silence it or shut it off. And there will be no public appearances today because this is more or less a closed meeting. And I'm going to read a statement as far as that.
John, I'm sorry, this is not a closed meeting, just to be clear.
Okay.
John, turn on your microphone.
Okay, this is a restricted.
It's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting restricted.
Yeah, we don't have public access.
Social distancing.
And if I might, you might ask, Ryan, whether any public comments were submitted?
Yeah, no public comments were submitted or requests to participate by phone. Uh, and the public can participate uh by YouTube live right now, so that's their option.
Thank you. So anyway, this is in regards to thirteen D point zero two one. Due to the COVID nineteen coronavirus pandemic and resulting state and federal emergency declarations, the Minnesota Governor's Stay-at-Home Executive Order, Niklet County building closures to the public and guidance about limiting unnecessary person-to-person contact, having in-person meetings and public attendance at meetings are not practical or prudent. As a result, and until further notice, this meeting and future Niklet County meetings will be conducted under Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero two one, which is meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Questions or comments regarding any Niklet County meeting and request to participate in any meeting by telephone or other electronic means can be directed to Ryan Crush, Niklet County Administrator, at five oh seven nine three four seven two zero four. Uh, there are no members participating by phone today. However, there was last week and there probably will be in the future. And all votes will be by roll call today. So could we have an approval of the agenda?
I'd move the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, Abby?
Call the roll, call the roll on everything.
Cam?
Yes.
Marl?
Yes.
Luki?
Yes.
Colar?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd move the consent agenda.
Second.
Abby?
Cam?
Yes.
Marl?
Yes.
Luki?
Yes.
Colar?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Ryan, you have a proclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item of business today is a proclamation recognizing National County Government Month, which is in April every year. Uh, each year, the month of April is recognized as National County Government Month. Uh, each day, the nation's three thousand sixty-nine counties provide essential service to more than three hundred million Americans since nineteen ninety-one. The National Association of Counties has encouraged counties to use National County Government Month as a time to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. Uh, attached, I have a proclamation, Mr. Chair, would you like me to go ahead and read that?
Certainly.
National County Government Month, April twenty twenty, Counties Matter. Whereas the nation's three thousand sixty-nine counties serving more than three hundred million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas counties provide health services to administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, and much more. And whereas Niklet County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas National Association of Counties, uh, National County Government Month theme for twenty twenty is County Matters, County Matter, demonstrating how counties help to improve people's lives every day. And whereas each year since nineteen ninety-one, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. And whereas National, or the Niklet County Board of Commissioners and all Niklet County employees are committed to fulfilling the county's mission, statements by providing efficient services with innovation and accountability. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Niklet County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim April twenty twenty as National County Government Month and encourage all county officials, employees, and residents to recognize and celebrate the services provided by county government.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd move the proclamation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Abby?
Cam?
Yes.
Benoff?
Yes.
Marl?
Yes.
Luki?
Yes.
He's.
Absent.
He was just walking through, I think.
He's coming.
I would just like to add with this proclamation, I think the pandemic is illustrating how truly important counties are across the whole country. Uh, many of our services are right on the front line and those that aren't are continuing to be very busy as requests still come in for building permits, public safety, uh, law enforcement, and health services, all of our services. So I think this is a, a good example of how important counties are in Minnesota and the United States.
Jack, we just voted on the proclamation, you can still vote, I think.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Ryan, you had something on number two there?
Yes, a resolution declaring intent to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of bonds. Uh, as part of our capital improvement planning, IRS regulations require us to identify possible projects or purchases we may want to reimburse uh from proceeds of bonds in the future. The attached resolution gives the option for the county to reimburse ourselves with bond proceeds at a later date after the identified expenditures have been made. And the resolution I attached is um based, is from our bond council. It's a basically a template from the IRS that allows us to reimburse ourselves for expenditures listed here. And what I did is I took from our capital improvement plan most of our projects for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one and put them in here. So it, this essentially gives us the flexibility to, uh, let's say a year or two from now, if we want to reimburse ourselves for some of these expenses that we used reserves for, we could come back and, and do that.
I'd move the resolution.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second, any discussion?
I'll plan to present this every year from here on out. Alex, our bonds advisor says a lot of places do that just so it's, nothing gets forgotten and it's just a part of the regular routine to cover themselves should they need additional funding.
Thank you, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, would there be a drop dead date on this?
Uh, it's effective for three years from the dates of approval. So we got three years out um for these projects here to reimburse ourselves.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Abby?
Cam?
Yes.
Marl?
Yes.
Luki?
Yes.
Colar?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Ryan, you have another one?
Yes, so uh, the next item is a resolution approving the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four capital improvement plan. Uh, the attached capital improvement plan was assessed in the March, March board workshop. Uh, the CIP is intended to be a roadmap for the county to guide us on our capital expenditures over the next five years. Uh, approval of this does not commit uh the county board to making any of these purchases. Again, it's just a, a roadmap for what we see coming down, down the road here the next five years. Uh, I'll just highlight a few of the items in the plan. Uh, the, the plan includes all facility projects, equipment and vehicle purchases over twenty-five thousand, uh, public land acquisitions and public works projects, including roads, bridges, equipment, and facilities. Uh, on page six, or excuse me, five of the plan is a summary of the total five-year expenditures that show an estimated sixty-two million, two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand of capital expenditures. Uh, a lot of those are in uh facilities and of course are public roads, uh, public works, road and bridge projects. About twenty million of those are facility projects and another almost thirty-seven million for road and bridge projects. Um, the, the big item in that facility project would be a proposed new public works facility, uh, which we've discussed, uh, possibly uh doing in twenty twenty-four. There's a, we plan to hire a consultant this fall to start a facility study uh for that, that process. So that is in the pipeline. Also noted that on page five, at the bottom of the page, there's a list of projected new debts that uh we may need to consider issuing in the future. Uh, County Road Fifteen regrade, which set as earmarked for twenty twenty-two. Uh, and you can see there, that's about ten million dollars of expense. And we have options to use sales tax dollars, wheelage tax dollars, state aid dollars, and local county dollars. Uh, the public works facility, which I mentioned, would be twenty twenty-four. Uh, the Highway fourteen expansion project, which we would be, we will be providing a match for. Uh, MINDOT has come out with a tentative timeline for that project. And Seth believes the soonest that they would ask for our funds would be once final designs are complete, which as of right now is slated for the end of twenty twenty-one. So somewhere in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we're likely going to be requested to provide that, that local match. And then I just listed capital improvements, uh, reimbursements, should we want to reimburse ourselves using a resolution that, that we've just passed. Other items to note in the CIP includes, I'll just touch on highlights for each of the five years. Uh, this year, uh, we'll be completing the North Bend Kittle remodeling project, at least phase one of that, which bids have already been approved and I still anticipate work starting at the end of this month or beginning of May. Uh, the Health and Human Service parking, oh, excuse me, not the Health and Human Service parking lot, the new parking lot in Front Street here, uh, which we started last fall. Uh, the contractor will be also starting work on that again at the end of the month or first part of May as well. Uh, for twenty twenty-one, we've discussed doing phase two of the North Bend Kittle remodeling project. Uh, the board hasn't officially given the go-ahead with that, but we've had discussion with that. And that cost is estimated at one point eight million. For twenty twenty-two, we have a lot of uh smaller projects. But we do have a significant number of road and bridge projects, including the County Road Fifteen project. For twenty twenty-three, we've discussed in the past doing a remodel of the property and public service area and making the color uh more customer service friendly. I tend to pencil that in for twenty twenty-three. That project, if completed, needs to be done in a non-election year. So that's why we put it in a odd year. And twenty twenty-four, again, the public works facility is, is slated for that, that year. Uh, any questions on the capital improvement plan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, Ryan, could you again go over the details of where the money will come from the county to make the Highway fourteen contribution? And where that will leave that fund of money once it's been used for the purpose?
So the county board has options there. I believe our, our commitments is in three to three and a half million when we originally made that approval. And I, I'm not sure that's the final number, but that's what we originally were told. Uh, the board has some options there. Uh, the funds could come from our state aid dollars um that we get a certain allotment from. But of course, that takes away from other projects that we have that earmarked for. Uh, we could take it right from our reserves, uh, from public works, our tax levy dollars. Or wheelage tax, uh, money could be used for that project. Or if the boards reconsidered the sales tax resolution and added the fourteen project to the list uh of eligible projects for sales tax dollars, sales tax money could be used as well. Another option is that uh the board saves all those funds that I just mentioned uh for future county road projects and uses tax levy dollars or bonds for that money uh to pay our share of the match, thus saving uh money for our future projects on our county roads.
Will you, if I go, Mr. Chair, will you be making any kind of recommendation as to what direction or what set might feel or what other county, well, there are really no other counties involved. This is a Niklet County promise.
Yeah, we will, as it gets closer and we have a better idea of our financial standing. With all those pots of money I just uh mentioned and a clearer picture of our capital improvement plan at that time, I do plan for us to come forward with a recommendation on where we think the best way to finance that shared project will come from.
Any other questions for Ryan? Terry, you have a question?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd move the resolution.
A motion?
Second.
Motion, second, any other discussion? And chances are, it'll probably be a combination of, of funds, sources, I should say.
It, it could be. We'll have, we have, my dad, we will have a substantial pot of money saved up from sales tax and wheelage tax. Again, it's, it's going to be a decision to, or does the board want to use those funds for this project? Or do you want to keep it for other county road projects that we still have in the pipeline? If, you know, potentially, this is a, a chance where the board could levy and bond and, and pay for our share of the project because there is a, a broad benefit to the whole county to do such a thing, to use straight tax levy dollars. So those would be considerations the board have to make at that time.
And it might depend what the interest rate at that time is too, whether we do bonding or not.
And we, we had to cancel our bond refinancing this last week here because things are so volatile. So we'll, we'll know more a year and a half from now.
All right, well, thank you, and, and anything else? Otherwise, call the roll, please.
Cam?
Yes.
Colar?
Yes.
Marl?
Yes.
Luki?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Ryan, you have a discussion about the first half property tax collection?
Yeah, Jackie and I wanted to have a discussion today with your board about um first half property tax collections, penalties, and settlement process. Uh, as I've indicated to you and you saw in emails from the Association of Minnesota Counties, uh, there's been growing discussion amongst counties um about uh providing property tax relief uh to get to people impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, the relief would involve some sort of option for people to delay the payment of the first half taxes past the May fifteenth deadline. Uh, originally, state legislators uh had indicated they didn't want to take action on this, primarily because not every county is created equally financially and of the potential impact to other taxing jurisdictions that rely on the tax settlements. So they've, they've, up till late last week, have been uh not really discussing it. We've been informed that there has been uh discussion occurring since last Friday. Uh, Governor Walz indicated in one of his press conferences he may be willing to support such legislation to provide property tax relief. So that has thus led to uh discussion occurring likely this week at the legislature on this very topic. However, uh, I, I think in the, most counties plan to continue to discuss this topic. Most counties feel that it would be better to have a uniform uh tax program statewide so there's no discrepancies between county to county and that sort of thing. But again, there potentially is some issues financially with cash flow for certain jurisdictions should you do that. Should the state not act, uh, most counties plan to continue discussing this topic and to determine if they want to individually take on a tax relief program. Uh, and if so, what that would look like. My recommendation here today is that the board not take any action on this matter today, but rather uh wait and see what the state does over the next two weeks here. And I think we could still take action at our next board meeting on April twenty-eighth. It would still give us plenty of time to implement any program that the board wanted to do. Uh, possible options that exist out there for the county to provide property tax relief is essentially uh statute allows the county to delay or waive uh the penalty for late payment of taxes that occur after May fifteenth. So essentially, somebody that could not pay their taxes due to layoff, uh, the business being closed, whatever the situation, could delay taxes past May fifteenth to a date determined by the board. And if the board chose to waive those penalties, they would not have to pay penalty. They would just pay their regular first half tax payments on, the common date out there is, is July fifteenth, so two-month delay. That's one option being discussed out there. The process for implementing that, uh, there's been various discussions. I know one county has passed a program where they would waive the penalty, but there's an application process. So if you're an individual, uh, you know, homesteads, property, and you're the primary income earner and you lost your job due to COVID nineteen, or your business is closed because of one of the governor's executive orders, you can make application to uh have your penalty waived. Uh, the goal is with that and other programs that I'm, I'm hearing is we want to see people make their tax payment on May fifteenth that can and not just wait because there's an opportunity there. Another uh discussion occurring across the state is rather than waiving the entire tax penalty is to maintain a portion of the penalty. Uh, so for example, in, in your blue folders is a, is a sheet that shows the, the interest rates charged on these taxes. Uh, counties are discussing uh charging a one or two percent late fee, not the full fee for late penalties. And again, that helps the individual that needs to delay the payment, but also matures those that just want to extend it another sixty days and not pay. They would obviously probably just pay on May fifteenth instead. And then there's other variations being discussed out there of, of just offering relief only to businesses impacted by uh the governor's uh executive orders and closures. And to my knowledge, there's only two counties that have actually taken action on this. Everybody else has had discussions and is in a latency mode as of right now. What I'll do here now is in your blue folders, uh, we've provided you with information Jackie put together on a couple scenarios that we see occurring, uh, should the board decide to implement some sort of local property tax relief program. You can type, of course, we have no way of knowing for sure how that would work, but these scenarios we think are, give a good example of what could happen and the impact to the other taxing jurisdictions on their settlement dates. And then Jackie's also talked to some of our taxing jurisdictions as well to see what their thoughts are on this as well. So I will have Jackie come up and present that information.
Good morning, Jackie.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. All right, so yeah, as to what I said, um, uh, when we're looking at property tax relief and mainly penalty relief, we're in hopes that um the majority of the people who can will pay their taxes on May fifteenth and allowing a smaller portion of those who are directly affected by COVID to delay their payments. So with that being said, um, it's um obviously a little hard to predict the magic ball, crystal ball may or may not be correct. So um, a couple of things I wanted to point out to you is, um, we'll start with scenario one and I'll kind of keep this through. Um, there's a lot of numbers on here, but I'll kind of overread what I think is the most important. So just a little background, uh, on the May fifteenth settlement, schools get a fifty percent estimate of an advance starting, and that would be on May twenty-first and on May twenty-eighth. Those estimates are, um, I'm sorry, those advances are based on estimates. And what we estimate those advance, those advances is at an eighty percent collection. Typically, Niklet County is pretty high, we're generally around ninety-two, ninety-three percent collection for first half. So when we give those advances, we're basing them on an eighty percent because we don't want to overpay them either. So in scenario one, um, we're, um, my scenario would be that eighty percent of all taxpayers would pay by May fifteenth and that um ten percent would pay, um, would be given um some penalty reduction until July fifteenth. And even saying that ten percent doesn't pay at all. I, I feel like that's a, in my mind, the most likely scenario, so I'll kind of go through this. So uh, our first half collections is generally around twenty-seven million, and that's in the yellow box. Then I'll jump down to the green box. So another thing that we don't think is going to be affected is obviously our escrows. We have a lot of escrow companies that are almost twenty-five percent of that. So those escrow companies are going to make their payments. So we, we get a large amount from escrows, about six point two million. We also have our automatic payments, which I am guessing will also go through because we're already taking those, which is about one point seven million. So then I took the remainder of that, which is eighty percent tax collections at about fourteen million. So um, on May fifteenth, that would give us about twenty-three point six million to disperse. That would allow us to still continue to give the schools their expected advances, which is really important at this scenario. The, um, the remainder of the, the, the normal settlement date is then June thirtieth. That's when we pay out the rest of it. But the June thirtieth is the one that would be technically short, about ten percent. But then we are in hopes to clean that up on July thirty-first to give them the remainder of that. So the main point of scenario one is that the schools um and cities would get their expected advances and that their delay is typically going to be about thirty days from June fifteenth, or June thirtieth to July thirty-first. And so there's the amounts that I listed, the gray amounts is the amount that they would be delayed, in my opinion. So in that scenario, I, I'm very hopeful that, um, that the taxing districts would not be affected too much. Now, I've talked to the cities, um, and, and they are um in a fairly good position that they are able to carry that. Uh, schools are, are a little bit less than, than, uh, in a, in a, a little bit less financial position because schools, of course, are running much tighter budgets. So, uh, but I do think in this scenario, we would, schools would still be satisfied with this scenario. Any questions on this scenario that I, before I kind of go to the next one?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Terry.
Just one question, uh, on the green box, the last line says ten percent do not pay their first half taxes. Could you elaborate what that means? Do they ever pay it?
Um, yes, I believe by the end of the year, well, okay. To be honest, um, another scenario that I want to talk about to the board is that May fifteenth, and when you're making a consideration with penalty, the May fifteenth um deadline is going to be affected. But depending on the longevity of COVID, maybe the November settlement is even more affected. And I don't know what that looks like. So at this point, I was just, my consideration is that, um, everybody at the end of the year hopefully is, is paid up.
Okay, that's.
And that's what I would project. But I do see maybe this not just ending at the May fifteenth, uh, there, this could linger on.
And I'll just add, Jackie, because you mentioned ninety-two, ninety-three percent typically pay first half. So we're projecting ninety percent. By the end of the year, we typically have ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent payment in full. But given the circumstances this year, that could be less for, by the, by the end of the year.
Good, thank you.
Yes, Jack.
So Jackie, thank you. Over the years, I've seen people walk in here into this building and the courthouse before it. In May, we're going to be closed. What impact will that have on those people who walk in, their taxes?
Okay, uh, we are still working in our office and we are taking tax payments by mail. And anybody can mail them in. We have, they can pay by credit card, online, we have our automatic system, our automatic debit. And our, our, our escrows, which are a large part. So I don't expect that there's going to be a real reduction in payments because they can't lock in. There's still.
Should we be, should we be encouraging that they mail?
Yes.
Like, like future voting mail?
Yes, yes. So one other thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention, as to date, if I compare nineteen to two thousand twenty collections. We are right on track, even a little bit slightly higher in collections as of right now. So I don't see that dip in collections right now, so that's why I'm hopeful that the TV point of this scenario is kind of where we're at.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Terry.
Jack, were you thinking that a lot of people come in on the fifteen or what?
Yeah, or close to it.
Or close to it, so were you thinking curbside or something? What were you thinking?
I just was wondering, Commissioner, if that would be something that could be a Dropbox or something along that line? Because many people have walked in at that date.
I should mention too, I almost forgot about that, is that we are utilizing the Health and Human Service Dropbox. And we have been pushing that on social media and other, other ways, it's on our website as well. So we're trying to get the word out. We use our Dropbox for, for vehicle tabs and things like that now, so we've been directing a lot of people to that Dropbox.
Well, and I think Commissioner and fellow commissioners, we need to spread that word to our contacts, to our constituents. So that more people who may not have seen that know that.
Correct, and that's a good point. We'll make sure that, I usually do a press release on the May fifteenth taxes being, so we'll make sure that, we'll do that press release in the, the means that they can meet that.
So Mr. Chair, and Jack, maybe we let the township officers know, that type of thing as well?
Just on that same vein, would we be, instead of relying purely on a press release, actually buying an ad? Some of our print media, I'm, I'm thinking more so. The West End specifically is, we don't always, again, with the shortage of bandwidth and other issues. I mean, are we, would we be better served to make sure that our message gets truly delivered? Yes, County Attorney.
Mr. Chair, I would also suggest with that or an alternative to that might be doing a letter to the editor. Both for the Lafayette, the Ledger, as well as the New York Journal, indicating that all of the county services are still operating. Just operating by mail to remind people that they can still mail things in and they are still being processed. I think giving people as many opportunities to see that information is probably going to be helpful, particularly in our more rural areas.
And thank you, Madam County Attorney, for the editorials you have been writing. They're very good.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest we just pay for the ads, they, they're more eye catching. And if we want to get, it's not that's.
Well, we can do both. It doesn't mean, I think we can do both, yes. But I, I like the idea of it's there and then we control the message. And I think that's important also.
No, Jackie, one thing, and Ryan and I talked about this, is we would probably be having a vote today on one of these options. If it wouldn't be for the state legislature possibly doing something.
Well, not necessarily. Most counties that I've been in communication with are waiting at least a week, if not till the twenty-eighth of April seems to be the, the common theme. Of let's wait and see and continue discussion on what, if anything, we decide to do.
Because we don't want someone coming in and saying, oh, I had to borrow money and now I could have just waited until July fifteenth. So the better, the more notice we can give our taxpayers, the better.
I just have a question on the, the settlements between.
Taxing districts.
Well, when we make that, we make the primary payment, then there's a settlement. Is that settlement based on collected to date at the date of settlement regardless? Or is there, that particular settlement date is a statutory requirement? I don't know that.
Settlement dates are statutory requirements, so there are four of them. The two advances, those are, these, to the schools are based solely on estimates, on, on what my projections are. Then there's a seventy percent advance then to the cities and townships. And then there's the final balance of the May fifteenth on June thirtieth. Each one kind of is a little.
And that's still based on collected though, it's not, it's not, there's, we're not, we're not advancing anticipated or what was projected. We're merely collected.
It's clearly what's in our settlement fund, we balance that back.
Yes, Jack.
Mr. Chair, and Jackie, I, I think maybe this might veer from you to Terry. So school district budgets with the schools being closed, probably till September or maybe, who knows, even longer. Are they saving money at all during this period of time? I know they're paying their, their teachers, I know there's upkeep, but I don't think that there's transportation costs. I don't think there's that much in food costs. I don't know how they're, but I know they've got a lot of pots of money all over the place.
So I can kind of tell you what I've heard from the school districts and then I'll, I'll let Terry.
Right.
Clean that up. But, um, school districts, the, one of their main concerns are their bond payments with the tax money, which are coming up towards the end of summer, beginning of fall. So those are their main, main concerns. And the conversations I did have were, yes, they're scrambling as well, they're saving money in some areas and spending money in other areas. So it's almost like an accounting, a little bit of a nightmare for some of the schools. So there is a little bit of, of both, and that's what I've heard from a couple of our larger school districts. But I'll let Terry also comment.
Well, that, that, that's accurate. It depends in part on how much community education you have. The schools are losing money because community education, ECF fee, adult basic ed are all fee based. And so they're not getting those fees now. Uh, there is some savings, but they're still running a number of routes to deliver meals, for example, depending on the district act. So it, it really is complex. I don't imagine we have districts in our area that waiting thirty days from June thirtieth to July thirty first. If that was the option we went to, I wouldn't imagine that would be tremendously traumatic. Uh, I just, I don't think we have districts on the edge, the way there are some districts already on the edge in other parts of the state.
Which brings up another question that I have. And I don't know if I read this in a, in a newspaper or somewhere saw that the reserves that some districts are holding. Are not as plentiful as say our county. And I think that that's accurate. I don't know.
Well, there, there are certainly some districts that are either in or nearing what's called statutory operating debt.
Right.
Uh, and that's everything, they don't know what their enrollment's going to be in the fall, they don't know who's coming back, they don't know who might choose homeschooling or another option. Uh, they don't know if they're opening. So it is, it, it, it's a great unknown for a number of districts. But my, and Jackie, I'll turn to you, but my sense is the school districts on this list are generally okay. Not that they're great.
I believe so, they do have a long-term concern that, you know, if this does.
Getting far behind the goal, right?
We may have some issues or I think schools are kind of are worthy of attention.
And then the other question, not to interrupt you, but the per pupil allocation from the state has not stopped. Because of the discontinuing of education now. But who knows what the next school year might be if we open without school.
Well, there's a number, and there are a number of factors and Ryan and everyone at the table here can touch on it that affect the county. Because we have kids who are at home, kids who are in challenging home positions right now. Some of them in which county social services and other services are going to be tapped if they're not already being called into play. Uh, and we were just talking before the meeting and you, Marie and Danny are on the committee about broadband. We have technology concerns that go forward that some students will continue to discuss. So it's, it's really a great unknown as we go into the fall. So I think if our districts are in trouble financially, it's going to be a statewide issue.
Yeah, I would, I would add, under this scenario, I agree, I don't, I don't think our jurisdictions will have an issue. But I think we should look at scenario two because that paints a little different picture. Of course, we have no way of knowing what would happen. We think scenario one is the most likely, but Jackie can explain how it changes under scenario two.
Okay, so with scenario two, I based it on a sixty percent collection. Thirty percent paying with the June, July fifteenth deadline and again, still that ten percent that doesn't pay. The same math applies to everything here. What I want to note and what this scenario does is because we're getting less money by the May fifteenth. Is the ability to give the schools their full advance is, is not probably going to happen. And so in the gray, if you want to just look, we'll kind of just focus on the schools on their, their advance shortages would be listed there. So they would be losing more money out front. We wouldn't be able to, to support that full advance payment as they would typically see. And this would reduce their advance payment, bringing more strain, I believe, on the schools than anything. Now, this would get all, well, if, if, if things are going to get back to normal sooner rather than later. This would all be caught up, you know, by July or August. Or it may be extended, so this is where really uneasy healing begins. The one thing this does is, it does, it would put some financial strain on our schools, I believe. Because they wouldn't see their full advance payments there. But what we have to remember is I think that sixty percent of people not, or forty percent of people not paying is a very large number. And in my opinion, I'm hoping that that doesn't happen, but I just wanted to lay it out for you just to.
And when you say not paying, not paying by May fifteenth, it'd be.
Right, still paying, but maybe not paying by May fifteenth.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jackie?
Mr. Chair, there's not so much a question, I appreciate the sixty percent as well. Maybe this also goes to Michelle's point about a letter to the editor. There may be space in our communications to encourage people to pay on time and to let people know. Because this money goes to your townships, your schools, all of whom depend on that money. So even, I could even see myself saying, I might have waited till July fifteenth because I can.
Right.
But not really thinking through, this is affecting my kids or everyone's kids, everyone's township.
So I think it kind of rolls back to the different scenarios that Ryan explained about what method we want to use at a county level. If in fact the state doesn't use most of the methods. Is that we want to walk that high line of being, being able to help those that need to be helped. But also to get as many payments in as possible because we don't want to run into this kind of scenario where we're putting our taxing districts into jeopardy. So we want people not to just say, oh, I don't have to pay on May fifteenth, I, I can pay now on July fifteenth. It, that does make an influence on the entire county.
Yeah, I know in my communications across the state with other administrators, that's a big focus, is to make it, some way to make it. So it's just those individuals that you're trying to target related to the pandemic. Get the extension and others need to still pay upfront. One issue Jackie and I have discussed too is that we have a couple large taxpayers in the county. And we're unsure of their status, if they've had to close or not due to the, due to the pandemic and the executive orders. One of those taxpayers, it would create a significant impact on our first half settlement if, if they waited two months. So that's another factor to consider there as well.
There have been, if I'm reading you correctly, there have been layoffs and cutbacks at one large corporation that you may be speaking of.
But I don't, I don't believe they've been forced to shut down under the executive order.
Not necessarily, but the demand for the product is diminishing dearly.
Yeah, most of the counties I've talked to make, I want to make sure it's focused on those that have had to shut down due to executive order. Or maybe even extending that to folks who have lost their, their jobs as well. And thus I mentioned the one county has an application process. Another county that has passed a, a program is doing the reduced penalty rate. To try to encourage those who can still pay to pay by May fifteenth.
So Mr. Chair, so this all kind of comes into the April fifteenth tax thing being extended to July fifteenth. I wonder how many people are going to take advantage of that? My expectation would be many?
I would say twenty to twenty-five percent of my tax clients are taking advantage of it, most of them all.
So do those numbers fit into your model? I doubt it, we do.
It's pretty close, yeah.
Yes.
So it's a couple of things, one, the federal government can print money and we can't.
Right.
So I, I, there's that surface comparison that quickly breaks down. But I wonder whether it would be helpful to at least prepare for options at the end of the month. So for example, to have an application language prepared so that we, we could adopt.
We can, I agree.
And I, I think maybe the penal, the reduced penalty might be another option that we would at least ask staff to prepare. But that's up to you, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Chair, thank you, Commissioner Morrow, that's where I wanted to go today with this discussion is to give staff guidance from the board. Are you interested in doing something? And if so, do you have a preferred method? And what that might be, just a few things to consider with an action on this. Statute says the board can waive penalty if they determine that doing so rises to the level of the issue for the individual being unjust and unreasonable. So that's going to be your determination is, is the pandemic creating an environment of being unjust and unreasonable to require taxpayers to make that payment? Uh, if you think that, then statutorily, you have the authority to do this.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, it's that the penalty would be unjust and unreasonable, not the tax payment.
Right, right, sorry, great, yes, thank you for that clarification. Yes, that, that the penalty would be. Uh, another piece to this is, is precedence. This is certainly a unique situation that none of us have ever seen and hopefully don't ever see again. But a, a program like this implemented could result in future requests of this nature during the next recession. Folks may want a similar type of program from the county during the next farm crisis. A major employer lays off five hundred people. Again, you have to weigh that, I, I'm not really concerned about that a whole lot. Because this is a very unique situation that, again, we've never seen. We see recessions, we see farm prices, but this is very unique, so. But we always should consider those issues with, with any action that the board takes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What, since it was preceding me, was there an amendment made during the tornado rebuild in St. Peter? Was there a waiver? Is anybody that was here know?
I don't recall.
I didn't own property then.
Oh, that was my question, is were there accommodations made? Huh?
I think there was.
I, I can't remember it directly.
Well, regardless, then I guess I would ask as part of our research and discussion, when we talk about precedence, we should go back and visit that and, and look at that.
Well, Mr. Chair, and I, I may be off base, but I'm looking at the Association of Minnesota Counties document that you put in the blue folders. And the statute says subdivision two, abatement of penalty. And then sub-paragraph B says that this is available, but only if the property owner requesting the abatement has not previously received an abatement of penalty for late payment of tax under this paragraph. So can you only get it once is my question, I don't, I'm looking to answer that now, but that may.
I, I think that might fit into that, yes, but, and that's why I'm asking for some of that historical perspective.
But I think, Terry, this is guidance, this isn't some rule.
Well, the statute is pretty specific.
I think this is, this is statute, I'm not, we can get back to this.
Yeah, there's a lot of gray in these statutes. I think the intent of that is, is not for a lifetime, but for an individual payment.
Right, I'm assuming that that's the case, but it would be nice to have some clarification.
Does it go back one year or twenty years?
Well, and that's the point. And, but I, I, but I'm also asking, when we talked about precedence, have we done some form of relief for a larger group in the past?
And County Attorney has explained to me that this paragraph might only be about late delivery from the post office and not about abatement generally.
Right, that's, that's the intent of this statute. And again, potentially, even if the legislature does not do a statewide program, they may pass legislation, I know there's draft legislation out there, that cleans some of this up to take out some of the gray area for counties to move ahead, so.
I, I would like to have some tools in the toolbox when we come to this point.
Well, forget to the point, and I'm not, I'm not voting on it today. I, I would be disinclined to do something that you could, it just gets abated.
Right.
Because I would hope that folks who can pay do pay because of the dire consequences that could happen to our schools. So either an application or a lessening of the penalty seems to me appropriate. I don't know if I'd have staff prepare a broad abatement generally.
Question I have, Ryan, is if we do the application, would there be zero penalty then or would it be like a one percent?
It would be zero.
It would be zero on the application.
Well, you, you could do both, I guess. Part of, of the decision also is, do you want to extend it to people that can demonstrate they were laid off or lost a job because of a closure of a business? Or do you want to just focus this on the businesses forced to close under the executive orders? That, that creates a narrower group. It, it takes those who are on unemployment out of this, which we have people on unemployment all the time.
Right. And there are several other tools for those individuals that have been untimely laid off. That, I mean, they, there is a cash flow issue for them.
And administratively, it would, not that we're trying to avoid work, but we want to do this right too. Administratively, it would be much more, much easier to administer just the business side rather of trying to interpret individuals, providing us with their layoff notice or unemployment papers to verify. I, I have no idea how many people would turn those in. Again, one county has, is doing that right now. I could contact them to see what the impact has been. But just, again, things to consider. But there, the only example that we could come up with in, in recent history that stood out was the Medelia fire downtown. The county and city, they, they abated the taxes. They, they actually abated the taxes, not just the penalty.
Right.
And because of that situation for those core businesses that burned down and they went through this process doing that, and actually the state then reimbursed them because of the situation. I don't expect that to happen this time, but that was the most recent situation in recent history where there was a unique event that triggered something like this.
Well, I think you could come up, if the legislature doesn't do anything, you could come back with two proposals and we could scrutinize it. I wouldn't want to see more than a one percent penalty for two months late.
Yeah, a one percent penalty, I mean, if you've got the money, you're not going to pay one, you're not going to pay a one percent penalty, you're going to pay May fifteenth.
Yes, you're right.
So yeah, that would, that would be sufficient, I think.
And Jackie, just so the public knows, if they mail a check in for their taxes, does it have to be here by May fifteenth?
It's always been postmark.
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 It's been postmark.
Yeah, it actually allows for postmarks, so we
Sometimes it takes ten days.
Well, sometimes it does. So, but yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think our actual statutory settlement date is the twentieth of May for those reasons, because we're collecting.
Does that give you adequate direction?
Yeah, if the consensus is for us to bring back a proposal for two weeks from now, we will
Well, depending on what the legislature does.
Right, right.
The legislature is going to do something this week. Before we make a decision, we almost need to see what they're going to do.
Or not do.
Or not do, exactly.
Yes.
Right, that's what most counties are, most counties are in this exact position. They were, are having the discussion, but they're waiting to see what transpires.
So any more questions before we move on?
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jackie, for your work.
Madam County Attorney wants to talk to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Normally, I come before you and ask for a proclamation for Crime Victims Rights Week that is held annually, April nineteenth through the twenty-fifth of this year, 2020, with also information about public education that is happening at the same time. Today I come before you and ask that you approve a resolution proclaiming April nineteenth through the twenty-fifth as Crime Victims Week with the recognition that tabling and education will be happening at some point in the future. We're talking about doing something this fall. This week, we felt was important still to continue to recognize. We still have individuals that are victimized. Right now, the concern is obviously brought about by scams and fraud that is happening because of the pandemic. We're hearing about an increase in the number of types of scams that are out there. I'm particularly concerned about individuals that are anxious to get their stimulus checks and falling prey to scams, asking for them to provide that information to be able to get them a check quicker. And it's opened themselves up to scams. So we're also concerned about individuals where, while for most of us, our homes are safe places to be and the safest place to be right now, there are many that home is not a safe place for them right now. And so felt it was appropriate to continue to ask the board to make that proclamation with the recognition that we're still trying to get information out and do tabling and those activities at some point in the future. Mr. Chair, would you like me to read the proclamation? Thank you. Whereas Victims Rights Movement has resulted in the passage of laws at the local, state, and federal levels that establish essential rights for victims. Whereas Crime Victims Rights Acts passed here in Minnesota and at the federal level have provided victims with ways to participate meaningfully throughout the criminal justice process. Whereas the rights of crime victims are best protected when all participants in the criminal justice process, not only victims, are appropriately educated about victims' rights. Whereas supporting victims of crime is crucial to the U.S. justice system because our support honors the experiences of victims and allows them to find autonomy and empowerment through achieving self-defining goals. Whereas we must help victims access the justice, assistance, and support they need to rebuild their lives. Whereas in addition to the justice sought in the courts, advocacy by and for victims of crimes is itself a form of seeking justice. Whereas the accomplishments of the Victims Rights Movement achieved through compassion and collaboration and built on the courageous advocacy of the individual victims and their families across the country inspire us hope for future progress and greater healing. Whereas we are determined to respond to crime and violence by helping victims by not only support, recovery, and justice, but also a sense of hope for their future. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are offered to all victims of crimes. Whereas Nicola County is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for a better future for all victims and survivors. Now therefore, I, as Chairman of the Board of Commissioners of Nicola County, to hereby reclaim the week of April nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, 2020, as Crime Victims Rights Week, and reaffirm this county's commitment to continuing a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
So moved.
I didn't have a second.
Any discussion? Call to roll, Abby.
Morrow?
Yes.
Yes.
Lippy?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I guess I get to talk, huh? Okay, a lot of the meetings have been canceled or postponed. I sat through an AMC, what, two-hour webinar on Thursday. Steve Simon talked mostly pushing for mail-in ballots after the fiasco in Wisconsin. Big push, also very concerned about poll workers' health. There was a presentation by Real Time Talent. Deed people talked about unemployment. They talked about property tax relief, which we did ourselves. I had a call from an individual about junk cars in their neighborhood, and I went and looked at it, and I also found out that scrap steel is now worth thirty dollars a ton, and that's why people aren't getting rid of their junk cars. They're just accumulating them. Some good news on County Road Twelve, I think. Seth and I have been in contact with the DNR and local political people, and it sounds like that meeting of the Outdoor Heritage Fund scheduled for May twenty-seventh was moved up to this past Friday. And they approved it, but now it has to go sit at the legislature for comments till the first of May. And then Seth can start going through the steps again for, for County Road Twelve. Thank you. Terry?
I would actually just like to focus on one thing. It's the weekly check-in that our public health folks are having. Phone call each Wednesday, an update on the efforts that folks are making. And Ryan Pike can talk a little bit more to this, but I just want to thank, our, our staff have been wonderful on these calls. Very comprehensive on everything from what Jesse's doing and Dallas and Cassie and her whole team. So first I would thank them. It's tremendously helpful. Jody's updates are very informative, really seem on top of things and coordinating well with our partners in the county.
Yeah, I would agree. They've done an excellent job and been working a lot of hours to try to stay on top of this and keep people informed and doing a lot of outreach to folks in the county that have questions. So yes, they've done an excellent job.
That's it?
That's
Danny?
Let's see, since we gathered last, obviously lots of things have gone to a new way of communicating with each other. My, since my last report, MRC Executive Board meeting, South Central EMS Board meeting, MRC Act Board meeting, South Central EMS, which I'm serving on that committee, we're actually doing Zoom meetings twice a week with the medical directors and all of the providers in the region, which have been very helpful about getting people up to date. We're finding that we're trying, they're getting more organized about making sure PPE and other things are being deployed the way they need to be in that particular area. Also, two meetings with regard to armor, and I'm serving on the statewide emergency communications board finance committee, which the state finally agreed to their contract with Motorola and negotiated a much lesser rate than originally forecast. So that has a direct impact on our expenses in regard to that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to echo Commissioner Morrow's comments about the people working for Nicola County in the Health Department. These communications are very important, and we appreciate that. Since our county board meeting on the twenty-fourth, we've had a TDS Finance Committee meeting that was actually held with real people. I've had some executive committee discussions on the MAPLE project. But as Commissioner Kemp mentioned, the AMC leadership in NISWA canceled, the RITA meeting canceled, the RTTC meeting canceled, and that brings us to today. The reason that I'm wearing this face mask other than to save vote by mail is to protect myself and protect you. And I think that maybe we should consider that when we hold future meetings, that we be in remote locations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Marie?
Just about everything I've had has been canceled at this point. It was a lovely snowfall. It's done.
We hope, we hope.
Hopefully.
Commissioner meetings and conferences?
We ain't going nowhere.
All canceled or on hold.
Okay.
Or at least in front of our computer.
Approval per diem?
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Abby?
Yes.
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Lippy?
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Abby?
Kim?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Lippy?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Passes. We're going to call the Drainage Authority order, meeting to order. We have a consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
Any discussion? Abby?
Kim?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Lippy?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Okay, so the continuation on Nicola County Ditch Seventy-seven, can I just do that or do we need a motion?
Actually, I have some information.
Yes, okay, please.
So as you recall, the original hearing was set for March twenty-fourth, and we were closed to the public at that time. It was recessed until today, and now we're under a governor's stay-at-home order. So I am suggesting, recommending that we recess the meeting again until May nineteenth and at eleven o'clock. That is a workshop day, not a board day. But in order to get everybody, all the key players on board, that was the day that worked for, for everybody. Also in discussion, talking to the engineer, that if we want to keep this project on track to finish this year, it really recommends that we have that meeting either in person, if we're allowed to, or by remote or phone-in access to, to keep this on track. I know that there's an internet problem in, in the world areas. So Chuck Brandlus says that what they've done is remote conferences where they phone in. I would mail out all the information they need, so they wouldn't necessarily need the internet, so it'd be more like a phone conference. So at this time, I'm asking that we recess this hearing again until May nineteenth at eleven o'clock. As we get closer to that time, I'll keep the board up to date on what type of meeting that is, as well as on the landowners with a letter stating how the meeting will be held and, and how they are to, to get into the meeting.
Do we need a motion for the recess?
It, it's actually a continuation, I believe.
It's a continuation, though, right?
Right, I think that's the proper term.
So
I would move the continuation if that's appropriate.
Second.
With motion second, any discussion? Abby?
Kim?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Lippy?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Drainage Authority?
Kim?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Lippy?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Yes.
Could be a second?
Yeah, carried it.
Adjourned.